...a meeting that a number of people from counties come around and ask to make the use of this building. And it's here for the public, you know, I want the whole county building there, they're all there in the night. Uh, I think the definition of a meeting, to me, is to be able to either this community select uh, a number of qualified people who possibly run for council of the seats that's coming available. And uh, that's important part is to get people to run for council, participate in the whole county's vote. And I see it may need for uh, a lot of county involvement with the each block, all county town. Uh, we're as my meeting, we're already putting the pressure on that. And uh, there's been a number of other issues from office. Uh, Daryl has asked to use the building to vote by decision. And I think that, you know, I would like to see a lot of that to uh, for everybody here to make the town better and possibly, you know, there's a lot of county that they can handle. So, but this time I'll give the mic over to Daryl and uh, if he can uh, bring out a few of the things that he wanted to talk about here.
Alright. Alright, good evening everyone, if you don't know where I am, Daryl Francis. Uh, so I'm from Philadelphia originally, but I've moved here, so I call myself an importer. But I like about my community, they used to have a lot of camaraderie here, we had a street fair going on, and people came together. But I think we've lost hope here, and we've gotten away how we used to be. Um, I hear a lot of talk amongst ourselves and our porches, NY store, wherever we go, we need to bring it to the attention of our council. A lot of us feel as though our council members are failing us, and it needs to be addressed. Some of the things that occurred, I think is unacceptable in their behavior, which I did experience recently. This is not a personal vendetta, there's nothing I have to gain out of this, it's just I want to be factual, honest and truthful. Um, at one of our past meetings, I displayed a poster I thought was appalling for one of our council members to display on their personal page. After I displayed it, the meeting ended, and I was confronted by the same council member and his brother. There was a remark made to me, that I felt was very inappropriate, coming from the council member and his brother. So I filed a complaint, and I sent one to Sharon Vale, and I also sent one to the first local lady, and I sent one to the fire department, due to the fact that Kobe was wearing his EMS attire that represented the fire department. Um, I have a transcript of what I wrote. It's uh, kind of above and above beyond, but I was gonna read it, but I think I'll just give some highlights of it. I went over how the conversation started. He accused me of being racist, but the picture that I showed, it depicted children. It was a picture of Krempes, which is a German version of our Saint Nick. Saint Nick is Christmas time, children bad, they put coal in Germany where Krempes is from. They believe in punishing the children, kidnapping the children. So, over here, like I said, I accept their cultures, and I thought that was inappropriate for him to post. But for him to come to me, and accuse me of being a racist, he said I called him Nazi, I never did. I'm going to show the video. And for Eli Krempel, our code enforcement officer and our council member, I found it very inappropriate and unacceptable. So that's why this meeting was called together, we want to hear from people in the community, to bring it back together again. And if they're just whispering on the back porches, we want to bring it to our council members, let them know, we need to be heard. We need change to be made, so that we can come back together as a community. And I'm glad to see some of our council members here today, alright? Once again, it's not a personal vendetta, but I think it's time for us to be heard. So, on this agenda we have, at the top of it, we're talking about the code enforcement officer. At the meeting we had before, Ricky Rogers said to us, "It's not a position, it's a person." Now a lot of us have had interaction with our code enforcement officer, and it hasn't been very pleasant. And for him to, like I said, approach me in that manner, unacceptable. So I would like to see him removed as council president, or council member, and as the code enforcement officer. We can't move him as a elected official, for me to take action to get him from being an employee of the borough of Mount Union. So I'm sure Sharon has a copy of the complaint I filed, correct? And you didn't get over it? I haven't heard anything back, but I hope to hear at our next borough meeting, which will be Wednesday, correct? So I'm gonna start off, like I said, with the topic for discussion, and it was basically about our code enforcement officer. Uh, I remember back in December, you know, they came up with ordinance about parking on the street, on Water Street, that became an issue. People came out, expressed their opinion about it, we don't know the outcome of that yet. Like I said, a lot of times we're out of touch with our council members, and I feel as though, not just me, that a lot of things that we bring to their attention just falls on deaf ears. Once again, we need to be heard. There's nine members on council, as a president, and they're trying to reduce it down to seven. So, I hate to say it, but you know, when you're in high school, you might have a team with the mean girls, you might have a clique over here. And sometimes we feel as though, the voting process is dead. You have a clique here, we stick together, and outvote the other, no matter what we bring the attention. Once again, we're outvoted by four to three, or five to four. So that's why we're saying, when these seats come up, we need someone viable, who wants to see a change in Mount Union, and make it better. That's what we're here for tonight. I hope we have a bigger turnout, well, this is a start. It's probably about twenty people here, and that's good. So anytime I go over this agenda, and someone wants to jump in, raise your hand up, and I'll pass the mic, and feel free to speak what you have to say. So our topic right now is the removal of our Krempes code enforcement officer, which is Eli Krempel. I'm sure some other people here have had interaction with him, not too pleasant. I know he's trying to do a job, but once again, you go about the same as you do anything else. You want to come out like John Wayne, dump a burrow all the time. You can be more compassionate, you know, sometimes, like parking the wrong way on the street. We just had a coworker remind that niece of me. It was easier for her to access the vehicle, because the driver's side was on the Krempes side. But she got a parking ticket. Now, if I had been that code enforcement officer, I might knock on her door and say, "Hey, listen, you parked the wrong way. I'm gonna give you a warning." She might have said, "Well, I have surgery." I'm gonna be a little bit more empathetic to her, like there then. We don't just go about, "It's your ticket, I mean, you're doing this job," I understand that. But sometimes you don't know what's going on in someone's life, it doesn't work to find out. The ordinance for parking on Mount Union, Border Street, talked about it in December. Went into effect January first, probably a few people on Border Street got tickets. When it could have took fifteen minutes, the same amount of time to write those tickets, and you walked down the street, you could knock on people's doors and say, "Hey, it went into effect first of January." "I'm giving you a warning, let's work together here." Come back the next time it's there, then here's your citation. You gotta work together, you don't bite the hand that feeds you. We're all just gonna be together, you understand? So, I would like to see Eli Krempel removed as a code enforcement officer, because his actions I deem inappropriate. The posting that he had on his Facebook page under an alias, if he was so proud of it, he would have done it under an alias. The day I brought his attention, you defended his, about the Krempes thing, Sharon. But, I feel as though, if he hadn't stood up, might have been there and said, "Hey, that poster threatened anybody, I apologize." I wouldn't have pursued this any further. But because of the fact that he just sat there, didn't have the audacity to come and post me afterwards, after everyone left. It wasn't when people were there like, "We're just throwing right now." He waited until the building was just empty, Tim Allison, the young girl, to approach me. But he could have talked to me madly, man, like I was talking to everyone here today. So, that's my feeling on Eli Krempel, I'd just see him removed from office, Sharon. I'm speaking to you right now, that's my feeling. If anyone else has something to say about Eli right now, feel free, take the microphone. Raise your hand, if not, we'll move on. Once again, it's not a personal vendetta.
I will say something, as far as being, I don't, I don't want to do the microphones.
We can hear you walk. That's fine, it's good.
Hi, um, I'm, uh, I remember reading class meeting. Um, my issue is not so much individualized, as much as being able to approach, approach or counsel people, and feel comfortable about it. I do not feel comfortable approaching Alex or listening, they're in my, um, ward. And, these are from people that just are ready, that you can just approach. I want to see counsel that I can feel comfortable with, that will work together, and try to make a difference in the community. Like I said, now I don't have any individual thing to say about Alex, I haven't actually had any personal, you know, involvement with him. But I have heard many things about him. Um, I do know that from my experience with the last town meeting, him and his brother had numerous things to say on our Facebook pages. Don't resort to Facebook. If you have something to say, come out to the individuals that you want to address it to, and say it. Um, I was called a dumbass, I was called an idiot, on Facebook, and I didn't appreciate it. I did approach Kobe about it, he apologized. But still, it was all already put out there, for everybody to read. So, that's not the kind of council people, or the people that are supposed to be, um, working, saying, "Our town." That's not the kind of behavior we want to see.
You're welcome to reach out to me or Steve at any time.
Oh, I will, I will, definitely. Um, I don't remember your first name.
Helen.
Helen, okay. Whenever we had that last meeting, you would say to me, you made a comment about, "Well, you come out, you know, this is the first time, everybody has something to say, if they have an accusation. You don't know anything, you haven't been here for the last year, I've been here for the last year. I know what's going on." And you said, "Well, come to council meetings." So we started coming to council meetings. As soon as we start having something to say at council meetings, everybody seems like, they get all up in air about it, because now everybody feels defensive, because people are giving their opinion. It's opinions, you know, it's just certainly what we would like to see in the future, and what way we want to see things go. We'd like to see a little bit more information from council. You know, let us know, "Well, what's going on? What are you voting on?" I don't like the idea of the agenda this time. Um, I see where everybody speaks at the end.
Two places.
Huh?
Two places.
I didn't hear.
There's two places to speak.
Oh, but they can, they can speak?
Yeah.
Within that agenda?
I'll get to that agenda, and then again in here.
Okay. Because that was one of the things that we brought up, um, not knowing what's gonna be voted on, and then it being voted, and it's too late, you know? Nobody's asking the community, you know, "Well, we're gonna be voting on this, what's your opinion, or what do you think?" You know, that was supposed to be what they said, representation should be like, if you're gonna have a big, major vote. Then ask some of your people, your peers, find out what their opinions are too. It shouldn't all be driven by one, one person, you know, making, "Oh, well, I think I love it this way." You know, ask a couple people, maybe get some difference of their own opinion. So, that's just all I have to say, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's what we're here for, there's no time to make here. That's what we're here for. Does anyone else have anything to say at this time?
It's a woman.
I didn't play, I'm inclined. Um, I spent the afternoon, because part of the racism comment was because you had said, that this was America. So, even if he's of German descent, he should not be celebrating Krempes. And Krempes, by the way, is not the German.
I did not say that.
You did.
I did not, I know what I said, we have it on tape.
Well, you said this was America.
No, no, but that's what. I didn't say that, I said about race.
No, no, I said that's what someone else said, I didn't say anything. Someone else had said, that you were, because you had said this was America, meaning we shouldn't celebrate, or do other traditions, because this is America. So I actually, there I have copies, I sat down and read down, one from the history chapter, Christmas, Halloween, Easter, Valentine's Day, all the ones that did not refer to America. So if this is America, and we shouldn't do that, then we shouldn't celebrate that. Like, I thought that was insulting to people who have moved here from other countries, to say, "You can't do your traditions, you can't do this, because you live in America." I have a sister-in-law who moved from Miami, immediately, too. The last year now, I would never tell my younger daughter, so, you know, like, I'm a fellow German descent too, I would never tell somebody that they can't do something, just because of it. But that's what you were implying, that this was America.
That's what I said, that's not what I said.
Well, then why did you, okay, then why did you say that?
It's kind of deflects you, it's deflects.
What I said was, the poster I displayed, he painted children. It was a white girl in here, I didn't care if it was a black girl, a Chinese girl. But the picture, he painted children, Krempes, the German version of our Saint Nick. Had his footman on her back, pulling her hair, the young lady took her breast, and she went. I thought my point in the picture is that it's Latin. That was the purpose of me bringing it up.
But why did you say America?
That came with, someone said about, I said, "Germany." We have different cultures, it's all around the world. Some can eat chicken, some can eat pork, some can eat... We all have our own culture that you live by. I agree with you, we're both, we're both on this.
Just that then why did you bring up America against someone who's been doing something?
This is America. I don't have all that. You can finish, I want you to make a little bit of a point.
Um, and again, like, so Krempes is, okay, there's Santa, who came from, yeah, who came from Germany. Krempes comes from, Saint Nick is bad, he's not like, we Germany, Saint Nick. But that's, and why you put that, because that's on him, I'm just saying, to be factual. Krempes isn't just Santa Claus, it's like, the good and the bad, to scare children to be good, so Saint Nick. Um, also, because it was brought up at the meeting, that people don't, um, get the newspaper to stay up with stuff at the meetings. I did briefly think about, like, kind of taking notes, and making a group, to say, "This is what was talked about." And to let people see, or message, or whatever, and then, you know, but I'm afraid that it would end up, people just attacking people. But, if they're interested in doing it, I'd try, just because most people, they don't have a newspaper in their system.
To do what, what you're trying to do?
To say, well, because people said they didn't know, it was in, whether it was a newspaper or not.
Who, Krempes?
No, this is not the newspaper. Um, the whole parking thing, because if you didn't see that the newspaper, or something, you know, it's in, to post it somewhere else. So that people can read the minutes and say, "Oh, they're talking about parking, or minutes, this is what I have to say about it." So if they don't come to the meeting, or don't read the newspaper, or whatever, at least it's just listed. Like, it's just an informational thing, this is what they talk about, this is what they might be doing.
This is the Metonome Borough website?
Yes.
But everybody on their phone, if everybody could get the, uh...
I just want to say one more thing, I thought we were talking about, what, I don't know how we got into this.
That's what we're talking about.
I was talking, they're gonna come around, I'm gonna tear the file, my time is cutting low. We were talking about, we were talking about, um, Stan's stuff.
But, uh, we have, uh, this, to, uh... If we're supposed to be able to talk to people, yeah, if anyone says you see me during that, then we'll do that.
Can I add something?
There are men, yes.
I want to ask you, you have a child, children? It's just strange, I don't understand how you're doing it, friend, or someone, I don't, but, um, I'm Russian, I just move here, and I, he does this, and if I do something invasive on my page, it looks strange. It doesn't matter what celebrate I, what holiday I celebrate, it doesn't matter, it just looks strange. But I'm just certain of course, if my council member, and if I do something like that, and he decide what my children will do next year, and next year, he decide this question, and he put that picture, and it's probably picture to see everyone in town, in the country, everyone, what's inside his head? If he put it for everyone, and he should decide what we will do, what's people, uh, what's people money should, uh, spend? I just don't understand, it's just strange. It doesn't matter what's put in.
I'm not saying that right, Krempes.
If I go outside, how my husband, someone has horse on the street, here. I think there might be a lot of songs, something, is, "Oh, I just met her, I seen America, I didn't do her, what?"
Anyone else?
I'm waiting.
I have a new inquiry, and I would say that this is America, with one hand in the grave, this one hand in the grave, and one in the grave. I believe that the standard for borough employees, citizens of the borough, and council members, is that it starts with stability, starting with stability. And then the latest rumor that I've known, King, he fought by battle law. I don't know how to be political, on this, share the word, or do the word, or, I just think that he made a very good point. If we can't be civil, or, uh, borders, and, at this point, what does that prove? Oh, you're an alien, you're a... How does that make my point? Martin Luther King Jr., Reverend Martin Luther, who's gonna set the standard in this country. He set the latest tradition of the standard. It was set the bylaw before him. I just think that he is the latest, much stronger example of stability. And if we are intruding underneath this personal space, such as what Daryl has alleged happened, and I am the reason for that, I was also told that interaction between Alex and Daryl and Mitch, Alex and David, Daryl's personal space, that's not civil. That's, that's moved towards physical confrontation. And what, and how it is that, if I hit you hard, you hit me? And, you know, somebody else made a remark, you know, hoping he's watching, because Daryl probably is watching like, "Oh." And you know what, if he was smart, he could not do that again. And there's a line there. And I just think, if you can't be civil, if you can't be professional, you have no role, you have no business, no role in public service, as a paid employee, as a, as a council member, as a private official member, I don't care. If you're the level of okay. And, you know, I'm hearing, you know, explanations on both sides about how it's acting, and I'm, and I'm gonna remind you that this seems to be a continuing pattern, you know? And there needs to be a kind of goal. The standard is the standard. And I also want to remind you, that there are other communities in hunting county that are also American. And they do not operate this way. They do not make the page for the Jurispreneur Show. This is not the Jurispreneur Show. And if you were a business, and you were thinking about what community you want to come through, now, now, I mean, the right law, versus doing the business, and the color of money is really good. Why, and, if you want to come here? I guess I'm gonna say another subject. Robertsdale started the project, they finished the project, they started another project, and they finished that one. And they keep going, and going, and going. And I don't read one word of anger, or drama, or whatever else, in Robertsdale. And hunting, you don't hear, you don't, you don't hear that in other places. And so from someone telling that this borough is being run well, I would really like for someone to sit down and tell you that, and make, make my point, because they're not gonna work.
So. Sorry to get one time. It's okay. It's, uh, anyone else have anything on the subject of our code enforcement officer? At this moment?
Hello, everybody, name is John Roberts. Been on council now for the second term, that is about six years, five, six years. I met the code enforcement officer when he first came to the, um, borough, 'cause I was the first now to sign. Um, when he applied, he was one of the better candidates, he turned over his paper. However, once he got the position, it's almost like he turned to somebody else, making a mark, making a remark, stating that, "Ew, I'm gonna make people mad." First point, first wrong move from a person who's supposed to get in the borough to do good, do something positive. He starts with a negative. From that point on, it's been one atrocity, I am calling it atrocity, one atrocity after the other. Here we are, six years later, we're still dealing with the code enforcement officer doing things that he has no business doing. On, on social media, he's been doing that too for quite a while. Being very negative and unglued, and I think it's time for him to step up and ship out. Enough is enough, personally, I'm tired of it. Yeah, I'm on a court myself, for two years, for, I would call it a malicious prosecution, whether you like it or not. It was very malicious, but I wouldn't have gone down like that, and that was fact. Yeah, I won the case, but for me to say that I won the case, I'm still pissed off. You know, we need to grow up and put kids to the side. Yeah, I'm talking about all them, that one, you have a challenge. Whoever Krempes is, we don't need an education on Krempes. We got too much to do in this community to burn out Krempes, or the other historical things that, uh, man, that is America. Krempes is not American. And to put it on... And to put it on social media under a fictitious name, what is going on? That's the need to be resolved. All this other talk don't mean nothing, we're wasting our time, and we're wasting our energy being up in here, meeting after meeting. This is about the sixth meeting this year, from, um, September to now, two decades. So this is the best thing to do, this is the sad case, that's what I have to say.
Well, I think we'll rule on that, that's I'm going to do. Someone else had to be addressed, code enforcement officer issue.
It's going to be naked from the beginning, we talked about. He got petition together, tried to use the non-council members.
From nine out to seven. We've got a lot of non-signatures of petitions, we'll tell you all about it again.
Yes, I passed around a petition twice in the span of two months, three months. Borough council voted twice, and the last three months, we reduced our size. Now, if you're bored after meeting, I invite you to go and read and search for the size of borough councils across the state of Pennsylvania. If you're not bored, and you're comfortable, Cambridge, Earth, Alton, Pittsburgh, and Philly. Four communities, all massively larger, in the size of rural, not even, have nine members. Nine. And Pittsburgh and Philly, they pay a hundred and twenty-five grand a year. For council members. And Jesus Christ, I mean, and that's, that's, I'm sorry, but that's not what I live, you know? And I started reading the newspaper in nineteen ninety, I gave the plug. Every day. Over and up. Borough council was disagreeing with each other. Not getting anything done. Brick yards are closing, things are evaporating. Cheryl, uh, Cheryl Street turned into, looks like something on the old west. And they, they can never agree on anything. That will actually benefit my union. Unless you're voting that you support Peter Lee or something. I mean. You have, you, you already have a seat that was vacated by Heath Barnes. Why was it vacated by Heath Barnes? Well, what difference? One, which is that they can never agree on anything. He was wasting his time, he's a very busy man. I think he's a very, highly, highly intelligent individual, and I think he's a very, 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 very honorable fellow. And he left. Uh, since time's up. And he told me. When I got with the family, I had to turn, I had to wonder about whether or not they were, they had read the newspaper the night before, the day before, and now in the midst of the grieving process, was going to ask me why or how I was involved with the, with this drama session. And many borough councils, with many borough councils. But those aren't reasons why I go from nine out to seven. It's outsized, the size of council is outsized for the amount of population that there is in my union. And they, if taught us we have nine members, you have people that are begging people to run, just to fill out the council size. And so therefore, you're not hitting the master of the rights. Now, we're talking about fifty years ago, are you sure? I'm not talking about necessarily what's going on in that. This is going on, they're here. And other communities have thought on of this, they figured that, and they reduced their council size, and reduced more. I was required, I had to get at least seven free signatures. I got one hundred signatures the last time, thirty-six hours. This time, I made sure the previous petition was not being related to that. And the earnest solicitor did not read the petition when I handed it to her. She had handed it to the borough secretary. She read it, she produced it carefully, and I'm like, is this legal? And I'm like, did it lie? Did it lie? So, I was, I had to get at least seven free signatures to the end. I got ninety-four, and there were none anymore after I quit government. There was political effort, and he, as a matter of fact, the ink was freezing on that, to the whole country. And I hadn't had enough. But I couldn't beat, I could not, I couldn't find out. But I cross-referenced the ninety-four that I got, and it verified that the ink was legitimate. I cross-referenced them with the federal registration list for the borough, I mean, across all three wards, and I went to all three wards. And the first ward, the second ward, and the third ward. I got signatures from all three, to be representative of the two hands. And in previous generations of council, they had been ready to reduce their size, and I'm like, oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute, I could be at the center of this. They're not, they weren't looking at what is best for my union, they were looking at how they can get a human paper, how they can, you know, do whatever. And you see what it does? Anyone else on that topic?
What's the topic?
It's going from nine council members down to seven.
So you're talking about elections?
No, we're taking, reducing the number of council seats.
Elections?
Well, that's coming up also. Um, right now, we're talking about the time of our current council seats. In order for us to leave our council numbers, I believe, basically to advise them to not confront. But sometimes we go to the union, and we see bickering amongst them. How can we believe them to make these good decisions for us, if they can't make it in front of us? We've had one council member, road attack number, a board comments. Um, it's just not appealing to the person, at the public, and as a taxpayer in this borough, who pays this out every seventy-five hours a month. That's why I found the full, full officer slash council member, Gregory Hunsler. And the board, as you're quoting. So he also proceeded to bash our acting council chair on the face, face wall, which, once again, is not something that should be accepted amongst our council members. Once again, if you can't advise what you're not confronting, then how can we believe you? There's this thing that need to be changed, to come back to us as constituents, pretty much, if you weren't appointed, that you have to listen to us, take into consideration what we lack in terms of borough. Once again, I believe, we, four people pretty much did take to what happened. So a lot of us have to start coming after these borough meetings, not just because I'm happy. The only time I've seen people come out in mass, we had to walk, what's the term, people came out. Um, the situation when the one hundred first started these town halls, that was about the child program out of the park. At one of the borough meetings, they quickly go through the budget, cut it out. But then she had enough, she started town meeting, they heard us, they resented it. And now the child program, the black one, had heard us out of the park. They go, this is supposed to be our office, and I think it would be more acceptable than most. We have to work hand in hand here, that's the problem that happened. You know? And the third issue was the Ford Street incident. I mean, I know he was supposed to tell everybody about that, put it in the paper, whatever stand, it wasn't in the papers. I think some things might be said that some might have been paid, I don't know, especially, I think. She paid yours. My book, and all these issues are resolved one way or another. You know, um. What was that? Is someone else to talk about, a time, a witness at our council meetings?
No, we're not, it's the turn eye.
Okay. So don't be afraid to speak up, this is our floor to be heard. Now, next, we have a committee coming up on Wednesday, the fifth. So far, I believe it's still at the borough hall, unless it changes, then you can go to the fire hall. But at the right now, it's still at the borough building, correct? Where is it at? Yes, coming up on Wednesday, the fifth. All right. Oh, we didn't know that. I'm still assuming that we usually leave that in the borough. No.
You got kicked out.
I got kicked out, yeah. I would actually leave my home in person for that, man. But I think as of this evening, he is no longer at the fire department, but that was one of the first I had made of my complaint or something.
Did you say he's no longer there?
I believe he's no longer there.
Well, be careful.
Resigned? Yes.
I, for the Brandon situation.
Yeah.
I saw him there the other night in the fire, EMS, cause he walked, I think it was like Sunday, Sunday night, and one morning, but he was there, Sunday night, EMS. So you might want, I don't know, but I'm Howard Grant, so you want to check in with him?
Yeah, exactly.
I need something, I need something, yeah. All right. So.
My question.
Okay.
I just got one quick question. Let's not steal from you.
Yeah.
The night that incident happened, I don't need no microphone, right? The night that incident happened, the mayor, who's in charge, leaves?
No, as I mentioned, him and I were engaged in a conversation.
I get that.
All right. And as we were conversing, Captain Eliot and Cole Wolf files. And the statement that was made, I'm going to repeat for everyone here. He said, that's why black people here are racist. And I said, excuse me? I said, Tim, did you hear this? And I said, what did you say, Cole, and he repeated it. That's why black people here are racist. And I'm thinking, where did he get directed at me, where is this coming from? And that is when Eliot turned, approached me, and told me that what I had done, when I displayed that crime poster, was racism. Now, I had called him, and I said, did I call you a Nazi? He's not racist, he always made it at all. He perceived the people I'm talking about, those Germans, called you a gunner, I heard of it. So now from the table I over there, I want you to run and vote.
Yes.
All right? And I said to him, after I had enough of bickering and robbery attack, and I said, I have two words for you and your brother. Excuse me, everyone, but I said, fuck you, and I said, fuck you. And that's when Tim Allison excuses himself and left. That's Karen, that's when Cole feels, he said, get out of this building, get out of his building, get out of this building. And those words, far written down, the complaint that I gave you, right? Sharon? Word for word, so you can quote me on that, all right? So I don't want to be misinterpreted at any time. When I say something, I stand behind what I said. I'm not trying to be a ass up here or something like that. Just sometimes enough is enough. I didn't deserve that, like I said, he had every opportunity to speak to me in council when it was in session. But he deliberately waited, hung around till everyone departed that building that night. Any other time, if you recall, he was in a hurry to go out and go to work. The budget been over that night, he had to hurry up, that's why he spoke out and said, I'm going to speak on behalf of the four of us. Which, number one, should not happen, that's a bitter story. So, that's why I gave you a copy of the complaint, the personnel committee copied my complaint, and one I issued to the fire department. So.
The mayor left.
Excuse me?
The mayor left.
Yeah, it was pretty much over with, because I was very relieved, but of course, the fact that Cole insisted I was made relieved by that, I'm made relieved. Because the last time I checked, it didn't own that building. You're right. I'm not being facetious here, I'm being honest, it's straightforward, there's.
You don't know.
That's what occurred.
And the taxpayers, we paid for it.
Come on.
I, I want to know why. I mean, isn't the manner of the supervisor vouch?
Oh, well.
Yeah, so I wanted to make sure before I said anything more. I mean, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Me either. He, he's, he's over there, the code enforcement officer as well as the baldies. And if he's standing right there in the middle of something, it behooves me that he don't have that. Period.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
And he's right there.
That's what I was questioning, the time in the immediate, in the moment.
And all of that, plus, plus, he has. You know, I feel too like, with the situation, you know, as far as the mayor being there, I feel like you have a sign of the reason that is white, that is meant. So for you to allow something like that to be said, blows my mind. You know, I know Tim worries about me, you know, because there is still a lot of racism that builds one in this town. So I just don't, it just baffles me that he even allowed that to happen in the first place, you know? So I feel, you are the mayor, you should always say something, you know? That's it.
What?
Yeah, I remember that, all the, all the code enforcement officers. No, a couple of months ago, two months ago, I think, was council, uh, passed a budget. And that budget was pretty hard to make a balance, uh, it was a lot of work to create cuts here, cuts there, balancing. I hadn't heard one word, uh, after that, in the fact of, how is council going to bring any more money for the borough or my union this coming year, so the next year we're going to have problems? There's been nothing done, uh, nothing forwarded to how we're going to do this.
Tax increase.
And, yeah, besides the tax increase. Uh, the issue that we run into, I applied for a building permit to go to higher school, and even to do. And I run it a lot for probably six, seven years. I paid the water bill on it, so I went and paid seventeen hundred, or half big, I think that's what it is. And I paid the bill every month, and to find that, that I went to the borough office to get land use permit to apply for my third party permit, is your America. And when I read this, uh, it said that you can't go over a lot in my union, unless it's fifty foot wide. My lot's certified by the law. You can't go over a lot in my union if your lot don't have six times as square feet, mine are five thousand twenty-five. Yeah, fifteen with setbacks, being that the minimum of one side setback can be five feet, the other side is six. So if I take fifteen feet off the thirty-five, I can go over twenty-five perhaps. My neighbor, which is joining me, just was certified by a one forty-five, dead in the line. His, I, I've neared, I can make, I can make exactly roughly twenty foot foot, and it went to the size of the house, and I submitted the plans to Alec to see if I could get a building permit. So the, the problem that we have in this town, we went back and took the G I S, uh, and hunting family, which is attached by the my union. Anybody can do it, you wander, and you look, and you're tweaking, you have a little bit over fifty percent of the lots in the town of my union, if they were submerged down, it can't be rebuilt. The problem that we have in this town is every time we burn a house down, let's just say we put a thousand dollars on the tax roll. So next year, we run another town with a thousand dollars on the tax roll. So how do we continue to pay bills that the Mountain Union Borough has every year with the sewer, the water, the streets, you know, the plow, the snow, and all this? Besides taking that thousand dollars and dividing that out between every citizen or every taxpayer in Mountain Bar, which gives us tax increase to keep going? We can't continue to do this. We need to redevelop how we build. This town was built on thirty five foot lots. We need to back and change our building limits to match the way the town was originally designed, so that we can build houses. Every time we build a new house, we're going to get another thousand fifteen hundred dollars back at our tax roll that might not be balanced a bunch next year. And I'm willing to, as a citizen of the community and as a builder, you know, I'm willing to set up a committee to help to do this. Uh, Richard Irvin has submitted a bill to the House of Representatives to allow communities to go back and build on community, build community the way it was originally built. Mountain Bar was three foot side setback when it was built, in the residential part of that. In the, in the commercial part of town, like the building was standing, it's built, like, uh, there's no new space between my building and the next building. And that's the way the town is built. Uh, I wish we could devote more time as a town and as a council on constructive projects like this, where we're going to increase how much money we're going to get for the Borough next year. I would like to see us have a little bit of that, a little bit extra. We might be able to do something else to make our town a little bit nicer, uh, be a little bit more proud of. Uh, we'd like to think about building all these empty buildings with small businesses, shops, because when our community becomes a tourist, that's a world of all the bad. When we have nothing to show, they're going to decide to buy the empty doors. And, uh, as far as the getting back to the code enforcement officer, uh, in business, uh, myself, if I had money, water, car cause money and water. The only way to rid money and water is to rid the problem. And that's all I have to say about the code enforcement officer. Where are you going to go?
Okay, I'm going to re- refresh the poster that I displayed in town, and start on this. This is what I displayed. All right? This is what, this is what I explained, I fully settled.
Right, this.
All right? I have to do a race, a little bit of fun with the rest. Does anyone consider that child abuse is funny? Who's your show over here? If I show two in here. All right?
No, it's not funny.
Is your hand up, you think it's funny?
No, it's not.
Oh, 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 oh.
That's not funny, it's not funny.
All right, this is what I displayed. I find it appalling, unacceptable, for any person, let one of council members representing us, all right? Now, Kayla, you want to quote? I'm not trying to be anal about this here, but I think that's why I seen this, a conversation between you and Sharon. And this picture of the dog being upside down, and you're mocking, once again, child abuse.
Oh, that is so wrong.
Okay?
That is.
This is from Sharon Bill, our senior, Sharon Bill. It can be wrong, on code of behavior, now, go her.
All right now.
Sharon Bill, see, I'm sure I have referred to child abuse.
All righty.
Laughing emoji. Kayla Long, teeter back to Sharon Bill, oh my God, now I'm going to get nailed. I quote and unquote. Like I said, if you want to quote, make sure you do correctly, because I can quote you. All right? Those comments from our recently elected council president, I think, come out when I talk about.
That needs to be addressed up there.
Our current council members.
I think you should address it. I agree with that.
Excuse me? Well, why have her?
You laugh when my crap is.
I say, listen, not to argue with this.
What's funny?
Why have her be president when Germany, stuff like that, why have her be president?
Well, it's funny, I don't see nothing funny about either one of that.
Why have her be president when stuff like that?
I'm saying. Why, why have her be president when shit like that happens? She should be removed, not be president.
And you think it's funny?
Yeah, that's, I had friends, I had family members who were victims of child abuse. There is nothing funny. About that. You're good. That, as I told you, our representatives and corporate action, some of the representatives of us as a community. I'm seeing people who quote you, which you go to this store. Anyone else have anything to say about the conflict of our council members?
Uh, please do.
See, and that brings up other actions. I submitted this here, uh, complaint. All of a sudden, that changed the personnel committee. John would be moved, Cheryl Marino would be moved, and two other people was inserted. He has everybody with him, current president. But I thought it was a move counter to my actions were, and it wasn't that, it was something that made the benefit of the community or residents. It's basically, I think, was a sack of debt, so the future would be, you know, if you get your sack of debt in your favor. We, as the constituents, residents, should have a role to play. That's all we're asking from you. That's all. Listen to us, listen to us, listen to us, we're going to be heard, and make changes. And that brings up changes. What are your seats that are coming up? I don't know if everyone's aware of it, who's in here today. There's going to be six seats coming up for our council. We need viable people who had Mountain Union in their best interest. Not, it's going to benefit the people, it's going to benefit you, but everyone in here. Like I said, I would like to see the street fair come back. Bring us all back together, from I saw over there, see our neighbors out there, we're speaking, ah, you know, trying to sell us food. That comes back and gets Mountain Union prepared for one of these needy tea cups in here. We have so many empty storefronts here, that we can build a little bit of a thing. You can't be trickish, anyway. They come, they want to go shopping, they want to eat, right now. You know, like, uh, John, brother of the office said, "Well, also, if you ever die, you can stay away." That's what happened, I couldn't, couldn't stay away in our spirit. You know, people have bypasses, you know, we need to get our act together. Work is one, the community and the council, so we're hand in hand. And it starts here. I'm glad we have a couple of council members here. They want to listen, so hear us. You've heard us, make changes, be willing to listen, and make changes, whether it be like or not, we all have opinions. We might not agree on everything, but still, let's get it together as a community, once again, a community, just what it is, come together in unity. That's what we need here today. That's how we need to get qualified, people that are interested in seeing open every single ward, first ward, second ward, third ward. You feel like you're running, you say something, down to the top.
Where do you get your petitions?
Where do you get your petitions? Who gives that to you? Here he is.
I'm really kind of, I'm a reader, you get your petition, you can pick up next service day at the election office, we'll have one ready for you to pick up next service day. And then February eighteenth is when you must start your signature. So, if you want to get your signature for that, because it will be non-avoiding. So when it comes February eighteen, get your petition, and then you have three weeks to get ten signatures. Now, those ten signatures got to be in your ward, they got to be in your local affiliation, and they have to register, of course. So, I'll suggest you, one in ten, because if you don't, uh, say no, you can, and one of those don't meet that criteria, um, you can't run. So, February eighteen, you don't pick it up, and I will say, um, I'm going to call all these town meetings on the town. If you have any complaints, your best thing to do are in America, so I'll ask you to, where are you going to do that? So, if you want to make a change, at the office.
I want to see, I want to see. Yes, believe, at the office. Let's get something, Paul. Pretty so, young ideas, we have. Once again, that, that Mountain Bar, we can say. All right. Nathan wants to say something, too?
Yeah. Yeah. If, I want to say, first of all, that there are, when the petitions were generated in the past, and our signatures, and our council didn't vote to reduce the size. The current council members at that time, thought, well, I can, I can run shout. So why would we reduce the size? I mean, I can be the center of this, center of the block, there's no progress. To keep doing the same thing and expect different results? It means the definition of insanity. And you know what happens to the council members, who thought, you know, I can be the center of this, oh boy, and all of a sudden, guess what? They go over there. They're done. The, the next election? They're out. And then we just repeat the same process all over, and again, and again, and again, and again. We need to reduce the size of our council. Less people on council, a stronger, a smaller advantage, to reduce the size of our council. I encourage you to pop with your council representatives on our council board this evening, and encourage them to vote to reduce the size of our council.
I'm going to need to go. Don't really go there. I just need to hand out here.
I'm receiving a wild petition from the person saying.
The signature? The signatures are already handed in, the boroughs are prepared to tell our, our.
Are you on the agenda?
No, I don't need to go.
But it needs to be on the agenda.
It is on the agenda. It's only as though she will, she, I expect her to say, I mean, she promised me that she would have, uh, cross reference the signatures, make sure that there was at least seventy three done, and there's really not four. Verify signatures of furniture lives in Mountain Bar. Um, as far as our council candidates and the next election. Um, it's important that we vote people in for our council that are not for their own self-interest. They are for, they are community united, they're for the progress of Mountain Union, not for, or just. I didn't go out and get seventy three signatures, increase my arse off in, in a cold, I'm going to my eight seven year old grand, uh, father for my ability health. I did it to see Mountain Union for. I didn't, I don't know. So, I sent out Cheryl Marino. Here is the, who was the vice president of our council, she's, was on the personnel committee. Uh, we met twice, for probably three hours, and we came up with a list of things that in Mountain Union had for our manager, which they're sore, sorely immune of. We came up with a list of things that are not immune to people, because they're just in for our manager, right on the ship. I'm going to have to pass them around. I, I obviously don't have a copy for everyone. I tried to make as many as I can. Well, I'm.
One more take, you like that?
And, not sure about that, I think I'm a little short. Um. Comprehensive plan of participation. For our manager, we bring forward their municipal access piece. This is a plan, it's blueprint for Mountain Union for. It's how it gets EDP to come in Mountain Union before it goes to our staff. It's how we, uh, bring up our parks, it's how we, uh, get those roads paved or backed, all of the town. See that, I still have to scratch it everywhere, and you know, fix it, send it some money. The, uh, comprehensive plan is ninety pages. If anybody wants to get anything, or not, more than half a keynote today. It's going to come before council, it'll be good at long, after, what, a year and a half of working on it, hard work by the, um. By the steering committee, and also the borough senate commission. Code of the Borough, we have current code amendments, additions, and deletions. Mountain's Borough code is so high game. I asked the Borough's Solicitor, I had admitting something to, to help with historic preservation of our, of our buildings. He turned around, and matter of fact, they told me, you need to, you need to sit down and write the whole thing all over again. They are so high game, they haven't been noticed, like, what, nineteen eighties? And some of them are before that. Uh, one thing that is on the list here is, if you vote to our council meeting, and if you regularly attend, or do ask people that do attend, raise your hand if you're impressed with the subsidies, reports, and the progress that they're making. Raise your hand if you're impressed by that. A lot of them need to meet, you got to meet first, to have progress. I mean, but if we had a Borough manager, a Borough manager would be meeting with the safety committee, who oversees those with police, fire, animals. If we had a Borough manager, they would be meeting with, they would be providing their extra piece. They might also be holding those Borough council members accountable to the order of the progress. The streets committee. Uh, that's another thing, the Ontario City City Board Act, the finance committee, Mountain Union is broke. They would be, that Borough manager would be in the finance committee meetings. Uh, parks and rags. There, there is a lot of work in the town, the park rags, of the parks and trails in this community. You got to have the Borough walk route, I was down there today, top of the tree. There's a lot of litter, I picked up litter. These are things that are burning, they're all spiritual, they do the little work. Few times, he was burning, because he had to go on a daily walk through streets. Follow up, old people are terrible, to this, to that, to that, to this, and that's not his job, that wasn't his role, and it was forced to do it. Same thing with Cheryl, she's not going to be the Sarah, anything. She just, she just wants to see Mountain Union for. That's why she was in the process, I bring personnel things in place. Trying, trying to burn a Borough funeral, and these are standard things. I've never been in a workplace that didn't have a head. Live on the CD pack, you were very wanted. I mean, come on. And the list is getting longer and longer. We sat down, a book of the ordinances, you remember? We sat down, a book of the ordinances, you remember Cheryl had to look at? I'm telling you, my writing about God, Cheryl had to look at, they printed each, every other page of your order report. Every other page, what does that do? It was supposed to be silent, because our secretary said he optioned it silent. These are, these are basic, basic things. And Cheryl does not have the time, the money, and the. To go on a wild, on a wild, daily, wild loose chase. This is just the start. We, we stopped after three hours writing this. We need to encourage Borough Council members that brought, therefore. Carrying Borough Manager. It's something that you need to ask the committee, and I heard, in form, ask them, are you for a Borough Manager?
Where's the money from? Hey, you just said, you know, I'm not a victim, I'm living on it, so, I, you know, I'm basically yourself. I don't, I don't get tax taxes. So when I got hit with, so that you can come buy insurance laws every, I got a lot of papers to be viewed, and I gotta have an electric one, before you buy all of them. I don't get associated here with that, I'm basically, I make money when I sell something. So I used to go on Borough Council years ago, uh, people that know me, I have certifications, I'm pretty intelligent, I like to do things the way I feel, that's why I run my own country. I don't work for anybody anymore, because I like to do things my own way. You made some points here. I came because Cheryl actually become, I love my town, I'm from here, word on my chest. You just said we're broke, so, are you saying that, you know, that I just paid about twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars worth of property taxes in December? Okay, how many thousands is called just property taxes, that's not paid, that's for rent. Holidays murder, lowest down, about twenty in Mount Union. So what you're saying is. I think we need somebody, but who pays fifty thousand or thirty thousand for somebody to be the, the, the Borough Manager? You just said we're broke. You want to cut down from nine to seven people, I think when I was on there, I, I told them I didn't need the little seventy-five hundred dollars I needed, but, you know, I, I waste more than that, I'm never going to BMW, need, in there. But I spent more than that a week just in BMW. So I didn't want it, but, 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 but my point is. I'm, I'm not trying to be negative, because I love my town, but we, we, we bring up all these issues, and it's like, we forget basic math. Like, where, where does this stuff come from? Where's this from? I, I agree on the code book, how many people here, I got Larry, Larry doesn't work for me, and then, uh, my attorney's in Huntington. How many people here know what it costs per hour for a attorney? So when you say you want to have Larry, like, nonchalantly, and I love Larry, okay, you just said, hey Larry, look at the code book, rewrite the whole code. He's probably getting two fifty to three fifty an hour. He said last, at the last meeting, when, when they brought up this ticket stuff, which to me, wasn't right. How they rolled it out, he said in the meeting, that he's trying to save the community money. I don't know many attorneys that tell you, I don't need charging for this, that it's gonna cost too much money. So, 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 I, I, I came, we talked about a lot of things here, I, I'm willing to support, but I, just please, when you bring this stuff up to people. Just take your pen out, and, and just start looking at the costs of some of this stuff. There's twenty-four hundred people in this town. I was just debating people on Facebook, do you know what the average per capita income is for residents in Honeyton County? It's thirty thousand a year. Thirty. As of twenty twenty-three. As of twenty twenty-three, so we have, we have people that work at the prison, and we have police officers at the state police. That probably make a hundred thousand plus or more per year, so that props that up. My guess is probably, there's, there's more or less the average, the average per capita, if it wasn't propped up by the state police and the prisons, it's probably somewhere between nineteen and twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three thousand.
I'm gonna say something about the budget, it's a topic that we've been getting from the Borough all the time, and what happens, they make cuts here, trying to, um. Even the budget out, Patrick wrote about it tonight, because I always have questions too. Like, if we're not picking up Borough Manager, it's probably sixty-five thousand a year, where that money at? If we're not picking up the parks or the trails that they made, and say, where'd that money be going to? You know, it's just that something that the Borough Manager is supposed to do. It starts from the top, we haven't had a top person in Mount Union as a Borough Manager for a few years now. So we're paying him sixty-five thousand dollars a year, we haven't paid him in two years, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I don't know where we're going to. But that's something that council should enlighten us to. You know, we don't know, Patrick, who, who had the microphone over to him?
Well, I'll just, uh, give proper review here, General, I would say about Borough Manager. I remember a couple of planning events back then, Non-Union Planning Commission about, I think, six years ago. But General, when he was working at ECP involved, she did this study, and since we're low in American, we actually got opportunities, we're, uh, we're being represented, actually, it's ninety percent match, and most things that were identified in that. Uh, that plan, General, instead of our only equal, so, uh, Rita Fender was the early some, I use the word, she pointed for. One of the ones for a manager, and I'm even worried, ah, you know, lose next year, you know, if you're bad, but they don't, the state may pay seventy-five percent of the first year's pay, because they identified Non-Union needing Borough Manager, so they. Willing to pay seventy-five percent of the first year, fifty percent in the twenty-five, then you got to pay them, pay them fully. So just, uh, that knowledge is known, and thank you for doing that, dude.
An additional to what Patrick said, and I'm very, very, but that is true, and I don't, I'm not deadly certain of this, I don't think that it expires next year. But it's seventy-five percent the first year, fifty percent the second year, and twenty-five percent the third year. And what happens is, is if you have a good Borough Manager, his worth, or his soul, they find revenue streams while they're in those three years. Finding their own golf, to find their own golf, and continue on. Also, there, there's a real, there's a way. So that's one part of revenue, another part of revenue is what Dwight said earlier, about the setbacks, and especially in flats. If you start building houses, which Mountain Union is the largest subdivision in Honeyton County. I'm in leadership in Honeyton County. We had a class, the most recent class was about economic development. There was three people there from the Community State Bank, and one person there from the Honeyton County Business Industry, ACBI. And they all agreed that the number one issue facing Honeyton County is a lack of housing. If we had more housing. It would make it easier for industry to come to Mountain Union. So then, it just, it snowballs, and thanks. If Borough Council can move forward with allowing those side setbacks to be established. That's a lot of money, an awful lot of money. I forgot what the number was that Dwight told me, but it's a rather large one, I think it's six figures. That's more than enough to hire a Borough Manager. And there are other opportunities too. As business grows, if we can find ways to encourage business, make, make even more business-friendly town, that's additional tax revenue from those businesses. In addition to the salaries that come from income tax from the people that are running in those jobs. Mountain has a tremendous, tremendous amount of potential. And I'm a very, very honest person, and I would not lie to you. And there are other people who know way more than I do about these things, who tell me these things, and I'm not exaggerating. So it's there. Did you know that East Broad Park Railroad would like to put a livestock or an Amtrak train in Mountain Union? So that people can. Uh, has a train from Pittsburgh, Philly, New York, Baltimore. So I'm gonna let Mountain Union on an Amtrak train jump off. And walk a couple blocks to buy a train pit. At the, Mountain Union used to have a really nice East Broad Park Railroad train station. The East Broad Park Foundation has the plans to build a couple of that, of that train station. And they want to go on to do, is they want to take that. That train station, and they're gonna build, that's something that happened. And fill it with maps for hiking, kayaking, and also a place to buy a train ticket. So if you have to train in New York City. You just, um, you get off the train in Mountain Union on the Amtrak, you walk a block or two, you buy a train pit, you pick up the map, and you go hiking while you're looking for your train. Boom, that's pretty awesome thing. And I would encourage you to look. Through a Google search, it's the Philadelphia Empire, the New York Times, and USA Today, have all written newspaper articles. About how great and grand East Broad Park Railroad is. How it is, uh, one of the top ten train rides, one of the top fall foliage train rides in America. That was done by USA Today, you know, it's going on. Um, the Philadelphia Empire story, I read it, it's been a while, and I know that they were, they were really nice articles. And then the New York Times wrote an article which. The. I don't know if you know this, but East Broad Park Railroad has a Christmas Polar Express train ride for children. And that was voted as one of the best in America. Well, there's the possibilities, or the house is getting started, I could hear for other.
We won't let you do that.
Funny, but, like, that was part of the next thing coming up on our list, to talk about EBT. I don't know if you are aware that they did buy the Shapiro Building. In their archive, about the EBT. They probably have stuff there, each of their one of your interviews, ancestors, almost like a sentence from back in the day. He said, we had a grand open, I think, back in December, wanted to go over everybody, come here, and give the time, look at it. He was here at one of our council meetings, I think, last month, and he talked about the possibilities that Mount Union has. We gotta say something about it earlier, but we gotta be ready, that's all. I do want to thank everyone who came here tonight, to show that you are concerned, you're interested, and you're not going to step, not even failing, you know, visiting.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, Dwight's asking me, you want to schedule a regular town meeting the first Monday of every month? Because that day coincides with the first Wednesday, is what we discussed, you can take it to council, the other day. I'm going to be attentive.
And the other thing is, we get the help from candidates.
I feel that that's necessity of reflection, or if we need candidates, that we can possibly have folks on these seats on the council. And the candidates can tell us, uh, what area they want to be, or what they can do for that, and maybe expensive, so everybody here, we can call to their neighbor, or whoever. Somebody that has a lot extra time, and, uh, um, actually, they can come in, and we can share with them what we think it needs or, we might be able to repair that a lot better for, for a long while, if we can. And, uh, so Sharon, um, reporting from this town hall meeting, the council, I'll be right here.
Well, my first team got on council hardly anybody planned to any of the meetings. It's time to a little bit back, more people are about to be meeting. So if the council can't do anything, if there's anyone who dares to offer suggestions, I don't have, um, or miss commit. Nobody said anything to me about any going for me at first.
Well, here's to enlighten you on that a little bit, when I applied for this permit, okay, Tim Allison called me two nights later and said, Alec talked to me about this, he said. You know, if my house burnt down, I wouldn't be able to rebuild my house.
Yes.
Tim, Tim told me that, and I said, Tim, I've been telling you after ten years, we need to change this, what happened? And it's not that, Mountain Union, nineteen seventy-three, had adopted a building code after the seventy-two flood to get FEMA money. If you didn't have a FEMA money, you didn't have a building code, or a regulation to follow, FEMA wouldn't give you any money. So they adopted the Boca Code, that's a blanket code wrote from California to Florida to Maine, okay? So when you adopt that, then you have to make them little changes to make it fit your town. The Boca Code is the code that says you gotta have six thousand square feet, the Boca Code says you have to have a fifty-foot wide lot. It's not a sin that we have thirty-five, our whole town was developed on, on thirty-five-foot lots, so we just need to go back in and change them few numbers, okay? So when the house burnt down, and it was your neighbor's house. It turns into a piece of grass. A grass tax in Mountain Union is twenty to twenty-three dollars a year. So you bought it because it's a vacant lot beside you, and you're mowing the grass, because if you wanted to sell that lot, it's only worth thousand, fifteen hundred bucks. You can't do nothing with it, okay, unless you're the other neighbor, and you might want to build a garage, something like that. So imagine if we just made them few little changes on the building code, not a big deal, and we would be able to say, we can build houses now in fifty of these vacant lots. A lot to build a house on got to be worth fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. We got water, we got sewer, we got streets, we got sidewalks, and we have gas, how much is it worth? You can't go out here and buy a one-acre lot in a field, you know, for under sixty or seventy thousand dollars, and you have none of them amenities, okay? So towns were made for people who don't want to mow grass, towns were made for people who don't want to farm, towns were made for people who don't want to have three acres of ground to take care of, or pay taxes on. So by utilizing what we have, and I know myself, my company, in nineteen seventy-three to seventy to eighty, we tore down probably over a hundred and fifty homes from the tracks to the river. John Nebire, another contractor, the demolition contractor, he tore, he tore down over two hundred and fifty. So all of them people was taxpayers of this community, so if we had them three hundred and fifty people on the tax base again, our taxes wouldn't be near as high as what they are right now. But we set records in Mountain Union for having the highest taxes in Honeyton County, and it's only gonna do one thing from here on out, it's gonna keep getting higher and higher and higher. So who wants to live in the Mountain Union Borough and pay all of these taxes? So we need to not forget about the budget, not forget that we didn't have enough money to really balance the budget issues here, and we gotta figure out how we're gonna make it better for next year. And this is why I think it's so important to have council members on council that's devoted to making our town more prosperous. We gotta run it as a business, believe it or not, it's, it is a business. And we've gotta welcome people in that wants to spend money in our town, we gotta welcome them people in that wants to open a business, and we have to support them. This town does not support any business in this town. The people in this town would drive fifty miles around it so that they wouldn't have to buy something off of somebody in this town, and I know, I own a couple businesses. If it wouldn't be for the outside communities that, that just treat me great, uh, I wouldn't have here in this town, whatever, and if it wouldn't be for the money that was brought to me. And if it wouldn't be for the money that was brought to me from out of town, doing business out of town, you wouldn't be standing in this building that was falling down when I got there. Okay, so, we need to help the council. Uh, this negativity on council, I hate it. I hate it with a passion. And whenever I said, remove the cart to clear the water, I mean that, remove the cart to clear the water. There's nobody that's not replaceable. We need to work together, but I do not wanna take this meeting and bring all these people to council and interrupt your council meeting. Your council meeting ought to be cut and dried. It should be what we have to vote on. You should have comments. People can come to the council meeting and talk. But we don't want a disturbance at the council meeting. That's why I feel that we should be here, we can have the disturbance, and there's nobody gonna get loud here, and we're not gonna fight back and forth between each other, because there's the door. I own the building, okay? I guarantee you that won't happen. So, you know, but we need to respect each other, we need to respect the community we live in. That's the problem. Nobody respects what we have. We got a beautiful town. I wouldn't have spent all my life buying buildings, fixing buildings, and trying to do better in this town if I didn't think there was something here. And it's coming, big time. It's coming real quick, and we're not even close being ready for it. So, you know, there's, uh, there's so much. But I, I feel it's important to do this the first Monday of every month until election. I don't think we wanna have a town hall meeting every, every month for the next ten years, but we need to elect people on this council that wants to run the council.
Can I say one thing? This is gonna be my last thing. You know, in terms of councils, there's a process that's already in place when you get on council. And there's an objective when you get on council, where you need to do some homework, you need to do some ed, educate yourself. And there's such things, boot camp, which shows you what to do when you get on council, what the objective is. There's training that you need to go to when you're on council, so you can get informed. So, you know, all these excuses about what you don't know, you need to find out. Because the information is out there. And to get on council, you don't even study, you don't even know what you're doing. You need to find out what you need to do. Because it don't make sense when you're on council, especially when we're in a situation where it's, you know, there's no money coming in, so we wanna be broke. You know, there's no money coming in, you don't have much coffee we do, how much food we do. If there's no money coming in, we're, we're just the whole purpose. So, again, there's a due process that's always already in place. And it starts with a borough manager, chief of police, and et cetera. So, all this going on about what you need, what you don't know, get informed. And that's all I got to say, but this is ridiculous.
General, can I ask a question?
Yeah, question, question.
Uh, can I, see, Dwight, if I just ask, I don't know. I have a question that I wanna ask the people in this community. I'd like to start a conversation about a topic that hasn't really raised. It's something I've been doing some research on. I would like to tell everyone what your opinions are on serving water in Mountain Bar and Rushdie. I look right now, beer is liable to be served as is wine. I believe that if water was liable to be served in bars and rushdie, it would increase business, and Mountain Union might not play a NASCAR rushdie.
I'm for it. I like it. I like it. I like it. But then there are those other pronunciations. You know, it does bring noise, wops, stuff happens. I'm from Philadelphia. I know. I like North Dakota. It's a nice, cool town. Modest. You just have to come back to that again. Sharon, Haley, the rest of the borough council members, once again, thank you for coming. I hope you listen to us. I hope you can make changes altogether as a community, and you being our representatives.
Oh, I got a question.
Master, I got a question.
What's your question?
I'm trying, I'm gonna try to answer this one. Okay, it's a dog now. The dog, they work hard, everything else. I saw your dog should be on the lease. Okay, the little police.
Get into the microphone.
Police. Okay, you have the, I come around from work. And this dog, he looks straight at my door, and I gotta drop him in the truck, because we're scared. But I ain't there around, uh, telling her, please, dog. I, they might have lied to me. I, I, I was a man.
If you have an issue like that in the community, go to the borough building and fill out a complaint form. Then it can be investigated, because the government office serves only one person. It's not everything that goes on in this town. If you want them to be aware, you've got to fill out the paper, you will investigate it. And there are people that will hold them accountable for that. Okay? That's, that's what I'm trying to do. You gotta get fill out a complaint form. Okay? And we will ensure, we'll ask about it. Steve Jacobson, here with your vice president on Borough Council. If you don't know who your Borough Council members are, get to know them, because they're not all bad.
Is that the same thing for the cats?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know. If you have an issue, ask, go fill them out, okay?
And there's a, uh, right, we, we just brought you, Dave, to have a, a girl named Paige. She's a radical, and, and entertaining, and she had a pet. She doesn't know that she's gonna make it here, and it won't be a big deal. How would you get this removed? That's what it is.
See me up, you mean. Just see me how I'm. Just before you all leave tonight, I wanna reiterate one thing. There are six Borough Council seats coming up for election.
Thank you.
If you do not wanna run, find someone in the ward who does. And if you don't know what ward you live in, come find out. Go to the borough office, they'll tell you what ward you run. And they'll tell you who the Borough Council members are. Find somebody worthwhile to run. And it's a thingless job, and you're doing it for free. But find someone to run, because that's when this is gonna get better. That's it.
I'm not allowed, Daryl. I'm lucky, I don't, I don't get to run.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, we'll see that, that's not very good. But the first two years.